Good evening, everyone. I'll call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday, August 22nd, 2022. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, we have 21 items on our agenda, and I will ask the city clerk to please read Agenda Item Number 1.
Minutes of the City Council Meeting, July 25th, 2022.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the minutes are filed, 10-0. Agenda Item Number 2.
From City, from Counsel President Osing, introduction of new firefighters for the City of Marlborough.
Counsel Aven.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to suspend the rules to allow the chief to address the chamber.
Motion to suspend the rules to allow Chief Gogan to introduce the new firefighters. All those in favor? Opposed, suspension approved. Chief Gogan, Chief Emanuelson, come on up. This is your time to shine, guys.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. It's my pleasure to serve as your Assistant Fire Chief. My name is Jeff Emanuelson. Tonight, we have before you, we have six new members of the Marlboro Fire Department. I'm going to give you a couple of brief sentences for each of the members and introduce them to the community and to the members of the council. First, I have Mr. Robert Fajin. Mr. Fajin is an experienced career firefighter, having worked as a firefighter EMT with the Upton Fire Department for the past two years. Robert is a 13-year veteran of the United States Army, serving as an intelligence technician for the National Counterterrorism Operations Center. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree in accounting and finance, and he's a certified EMT. Next, we have for you Mr. Jacob Thompson. Jacob Thompson is also an experienced career firefighter, having worked as a firefighter EMT for the Gardner and Warren Fire Departments. He holds a bachelor's degree from Worcester State University and is currently pursuing a second degree from Anna Maria College. Firefighter Thompson was also, in his time at the Massachusetts Fire Academy, the recipient of the Richard N. Bangs Award, which is the highest award for the new recruits for having obtained the highest academic and technical scores through the course of his academy. Next, we have Mr. Tucker Holt. Tucker Holt has eight years of firefighting experience, serving as a full-time firefighter with the Sanford-Maine Fire Department. He earned his associate's degree in fire science after graduating from Amesbury High School. He holds numerous professional certifications, including fire officer, fire instructor, and an advanced emergency medical technician. Then we have Mr. Roland Saucier. Mr. Saucier is a certified full-time firefighter paramedic with prior experience working for the Sudbury Fire Department and also some private EMS companies. He is also a United States Marine Corps veteran, having served our country for four years on active duty. Now, we have Mr. Andrew Anderson. Comes to Marlboro with more than seven years of firefighting experience, including serving as a full-time fire lieutenant with the Shirley Mass Fire Department. He holds professional certifications as firefighter 2, fire instructor, fire officer, and emergency medical technician. Mr. Anderson is also an Eagle Scout in the Boy Scouts of America. And last, we have Mr. Josiah David. He's a Marlboro resident who has more than six years of experience as a full-time firefighter paramedic, working for the Wayland Fire Department. He served as a Call firefighter in both Ashby and Ashburnham Fire Departments. He holds professional certifications as a firefighter 2, and he's also a nationally-registered EMT paramedic. At this time, I present the six new members of our department.
Gentlemen, I wish you a long, healthy, safe, and prosperous career here in Marlboro, and your backgrounds are extremely impressive, so I wish you all the best going forward. Thanks, guys. Chief.
Mayor Vigen, President Osing, and members of the council. Mayor Vigen asked me to just give you a quick update on the incident we had this past weekend. So, as all of you know, about 11:30 on Friday, we received a reported smoke in the air of Concord Road near the desert conservation area. So, our crews were dispatched simultaneously as Sudbury and Hudson. Once we arrived, it took us about a half hour to locate the fire. We found several acres burning about a mile from the road, and it was spreading rapidly. Immediately, we contacted our Fire District 14, requested a task force, because we quickly realized it was beyond our capabilities to control it. So, our crews began establishing a water supply. We requested a second task force from District 14, and all those resources there were probably on scene within an hour and a half. Our crews worked until 8:30 Friday night. We knocked the bulk of the fire down to keep it from spreading best we could. We pulled everybody out of the woods by 8:30, because they're just unsafe to work in there in the dark. On Saturday, we requested two more task forces from outside of our district. About halfway through the day on Saturday, we realized we needed more manpower, brought in a third district on Saturday, another task force, and our crews worked until about 6:00 on Saturday night. We knew we'd be coming back on Sunday. We requested an additional three for Sunday morning, and our guys, they worked hard all weekend. We received mutual aid from over 50 communities, and they were able to declare it under control and contained by late Sunday afternoon. So, we took a ride through there today. Everything looked like it was holding, and I did not see any hot spots or any smoke coming up this afternoon. But we will likely continue to see hot spots flare up for some time, so don't be alarmed if we're back out there. During the whole incident, there was never any threat to any houses. The closest houses were several hundred feet away on Turner Ridge Road, and we were eventually able to establish a water supply and stop the fire. And I think the wind changed at that time, too, and kind of pushed it away. So, like I said, we received help from 50 communities, part of the statewide fire mobilization plan. We received support from DFS Rehab, MIMA. Both of them had representatives at the command post the whole weekend and got us whatever we needed. And our initial mutual aid partners, Sudbury, Hudson, and Department of Conservation, worked hard the entire weekend, and specifically Assistant Chief Choak from Sudbury, Deputy Sleeper from Hudson Fire, they were there the entire weekend. And then our guys, we had a lot of the new guys there this weekend, working, every on-duty crew, off-duty people, they worked really hard all weekend to control it. So, it was no injuries, and it was contained. I think it was 25 acres total, so it was a good effort by all.
So, Chief Gogan, Chief Emanuelson, our new firefighters, great job. I mean, you've got a lot of press over the weekend, and you guys performed at, so I appreciate all the work you guys did. Counsel is all set? Gentlemen, again, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay if you want an education, City Council. Thanks. And just as a note, there are three additional firefighters there in the academy. They will be coming before us, as well as, we've got about six new police officers that are going to the similar-type academy on the police side, and the mayor will bring them before us when they finish and are back in town. So, that's some good news for the city and the residents of Marlboro, and looking forward to having them onboard. We'll continue with Agenda Item Number 3.
Now's the time for the public hearing on the revised application for a special permit from WP Marlboro Mass Owner LLC to build a multifamily residential project in the business district consisting of 140 units and three buildings, to be located at 339 Boston Post Road East, per the court ordered remand. Order number 20-22-107995-Q. The intention is this public hearing will be opened with no public testimony being heard and continued to September 12th, 2022.
So, I'll open the public hearing and ask for a motion to continue until September 22nd, September 12th, 2022, at 8:00 p.m. Counsel Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to continue the public hearing until September 12th at 8:00.
Motion made and seconded to continue the public hearing until Monday, September 12th, at 8:00 p.m. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the public hearing is continued, 10-0, to September 12th, at 8:00 p.m. Agenda Item Number 4.
Now's the time for the public hearing on the petition for Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England, to install a new pole 78 to relieve the distance of new overhead lines from pole 75 to pole 79 on Farm Road. Order number 22-108651. In addition, we have a communication from City Engineer Thomas DePersio regarding recommended conditions for the petition for Mass Electric in Verizon, New England.
Okay, the public hearing, we've taken up in four stages. First, the public speaking in favor, then questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the city council. So, we'll start with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant.
Hello, Al Galvin, Design Engineer, National Grid, Hope Dale Office. This is a reliability work order. They're abandoning the underground system that's there in that span of power and going to go overhead with that. So, in doing so, you're dealing with heavier cable, greater distance and span, so that's why they needed the additional pole, cut down on the span, so there's no sag in the lines of that or anything like that. And then they'll, in doing that as well, they're just upgrading an older pole that was there as well. So, it's basically just two brand-new poles, bring primary overhead instead of the underground that was there at the time.
All right, thanks, Al. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Any questions from the public? 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 Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Anyone speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the council? Counsel Ducey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just have one question. You say between pole 75 and 79, where is that, and specifically on Farm Road? What's the numbers or?
It was, it's about 150 feet or so from that last pole. I believe it's 75.
Right.
Right before it turns into a little side road there.
Oh, near?
Across from 694.
Okay.
Airport.
By the airport. Oh, it's by the airport?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, that makes sense. I wasn't sure if it was that or the other side, but thank you.
Yeah, it's not directly in front of anybody or blocking anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ducey. Counsel Oram.
Thank you, Mr. President. That was one of my questions. I know you have three others on the agenda, and it's interesting. You showed the maps for those, but this one, I'm glad it was asked where it's located. Question, so this will be four of them tonight that we're looking at. Is it because of the equipment, or are the wires getting bigger? Is it because of the networks? Who's causing all this weight need on the wires?
It was a reliability job, so it didn't give me a ton of detail of what specifically was going on. Unfortunately, the engineer that did it, it was out. But judging from why they created it, it was a stability issue. There's probably some faulting going on or voltage readings that they didn't like. So, it's just more cost-effective and simpler. Instead of digging up the road and things of that nature, just do two spans of primary overhead where you already have overhead. You're just continuing a line there. One pole, you can carry right over to the next one.
In general, do you know who's causing more of the weight to cause for these extra poles? Is it cable? Is it electric?
The weight, was it a weight?
The weight. It sounds like in the others, too, you need supportive poles between the other two poles. So, I'm just curious if it's because of the new technology, where there's wireless technology going up, or is it because of?
All the weight of the lines? Oh.
Yeah, why these poles are needed, more or less.
Yeah, it's just you can't go too, you generally don't want to go any further than, say, 180, 200 feet between poles, because then you get that sag. We've got to keep height clearances, because we're going to be the top lines, and then you still have communications, maybe Verizon or the cable company. So, if we're low, they're going to be lower. You know, you don't want to get to that point, and then eventually you're pulling on the poles tension-wise. So, there's a certain span, generally between 150 and 200, we like to separate the poles and keep a nice flow.
Okay.
Keep the stability.
We see wireless technology going up, too, so I didn't know if it was also that.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure if it's directly related to that, but yeah, it was more like instability to what's there now. They're just upgrading it.
Okay, well, thank you. I was more curious about it and why we're seeing a few of these. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Oram. Any other questions from the counselors? Questions from the counselors? Any other questions from the counselors? Counsel Landers.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Good explanation. I think you did a good job. I think what I'd like to do, Mr. President, is for a motion here that we act on this tonight.
Okay, let's do that. Let's finish the public hearing and see what the appetite is for the council.
Okay, so you want me to speak later?
Yep.
Very good.
Anyone else? Any questions from the counselors? Any other questions from the counselors? Questions from the counselors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and it is in public service. Counsel Landers.
Okay, good. I'll repeat myself now. I'm going to make a motion that we do suspend the rules to act and vote on this tonight.
Hang on. So, let's see if we can get the suspension first. So, motion's been made to suspend the rules to remove from public service. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed, it is removed from public service, 10-0. Counsel Landers.
I think with his explanation and talking to the city engineer, I think he's anxious to move on and, you know, since your package, he already has the conditions, and that's what he does a good job at. So, my motion would be tonight to vote on this, let the National Grid move on this project.
A motion made and seconded to approve the petition from National Grid with the conditions outlined in this city engineer's letter that appears on our agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Ducey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to clarify that there's two sets of conditions, one on page 43, which is the standard boilerplate. There's additional conditions in page 42, which discusses the double poles getting removed on Farm Road. I just want to make sure that those are included as part of the condition. Make sure that's noted. That's all. Thank you, sir.
That will be part of the condition, and we push for that, to give rid of those double poles, in honor of our former president of the city council, Ed Clancy. He'll be thrilled getting rid of another double pole. But that will be part of it, Counsel, our condition to get rid of those double poles.
Thank you, Counsel Ducey. Any other comments? Counsel Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hate to push the issue, but to clarify, because the other conditions are standard, can a motion actually be made to have that language of removing the double poles as a condition be made, either by the chair of the committee or I will?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
I believe what was made, the comment that was made was that the conditions would be part of this. But the conditions are the standard conditions. The engineer's letter says, "I would consider this as a condition," so that's not an automatic condition. So, I would feel better if there was specific language on the minutes, that a separate special condition of removing the double poles is part of this.
Well, if you can make a motion to amend the current one, if you don't think it's on there, that's fine.
Well, I would add it as a specific one to this, because I don't know that that condition of double poles is standard for every single pole that we approve.
So, just so we're all clear, motion to approve the petition with the standard conditions, along with the condition of removing the double pole. Is that correct?
I'll second that.
Any additional comments or discussion? Seeing none, on the motion to approve the petition for the pole and the relocation with the standard conditions and the condition to remove the double pole. All those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 10-0. Thanks, Al. Let's see, number five.
Communication from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Levon Gilbankian regarding request to withdraw without prejudice, the application for a special permit for the Gilbankian Mobile Home Village to authorize a new building lot and replace one mobile home with a single-family home. Order number 22-108654.
Counsel Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the request to withdraw without prejudice.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the request to withdraw without prejudice. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the motion to withdraw the special permit without prejudice is approved, 10-0. Agenda Item Number 6.
Now's the time for the public hearing on the application for modification of a special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of Levon Gilbankian to amend the special permit for Gilbankian Mobile Home Village to authorize a building, a new building lot and replace one mobile home with a single-family home. Order number 22-108654.
Counsel Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Considering we just had a withdrawal, I would request that this public hearing be canceled.
Motion's made and seconded to cancel the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, public hearing is canceled, 10-0. Agenda Item Number 7.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $39,154.36 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. State 911 Department ordered to the police department to be used to offset personnel training costs in the Public Safety Dispatching Center.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the grant is approved, 10-0. Agenda Item Number 8.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed grant of easement to Mass Electric for installation of electric equipment for the public library on city property located at 35 West Main Street.
Counsel Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Seeing that this is related to the public library, I would move that we approve it this evening.
Motion made and seconded to approve the easement. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel Ducey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am concerned of the actual location of this, because while the wording says, "Oh, behind the building," it's actually closer to the intersection of Mechanic Street and West Main Street. So, it doesn't seem to be behind, you know, from Wetherby Street, it's behind that. So, I'm kind of concerned about the location itself. I hope it's reasonably well-protected and not, you know, decorated around, but I was hoping, if it's going to go into committee, I talked about that, but it's not worth stopping anything at this point.
If you like, Tom, would you be okay to talk to it for a minute? Would you like to have Tom discuss it with you?
Absolutely, sir. I appreciate it.
Okay, ask for suspension of the rules to allow the city engineer to speak. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed, city engineer has approved, the rules suspended to allow the city engineer to speak, 10-0. Mr. DePersio.
I think it should be on.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry, could you just, what's the specifics of the concern?
So, the location of the?
Of the transformer?
Transformer itself seems to be closer to West Main Street and Mechanic Street area here.
Yep.
Okay. I don't consider that to be the back of the building. I consider that to be the front of the building, so it caught me off guard. So, I just want to make sure it's pretty and, you know, hidden and safe and protected from large vehicles.
Yep.
Because that could be a tragic intersection if some big truck gets out of control.
Yeah, this depiction really isn't, it's not to scale, and it's not really, it looks a lot more prominent here than it really will be.
Yeah.
It's going to be, if you can picture the driveway that goes down next to the church, it's going to be right at the bottom of that. There's going to be a retaining wall next to the library that sort of will screen it a little bit. So, yeah, I agree. It's not as prominently located as you would think on this depiction here. It's tucked more closer to the side of the building.
Okay, okay. I appreciate the clarification.
Okay.
I'll second Counsel Ducey.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Counsel Oram.
Well, we have the engineer here. Tom, on that same plan, it's in there probably five pages, four pages in. It shows the wire going through the church property. So, has that already been approved years ago, that wire going through the church property?
So, the church needs to grant an easement as well to National Grid, and I have the documents and I'm in discussions with the church, so that has to also happen. You're correct.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion on the motion to approve the easement? All those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 10-0. Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it.
Agenda Item Number 9.
Communication from the mayor regarding proposed amendment to the City Code, Chapter 125, Section 6, salary schedule, and an updated job description relative to the position of head electrician.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to advertise and to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion made and seconded to advertise, refer to the Finance Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is sent to Finance and advertise, 10-0. Agenda Item Number 10.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointment of Cheryl Susie to the Disabilities Commission for a three-year term to expire October 21st, 2024, and the appointment of David LeBosier to the Disabilities Commission for a three-year term to expire from date of council confirmation.
Counsel Dumis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Refer to personnel.
Motion made and seconded to refer to Personnel Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, is referred to Personnel, 10-0. Agenda Item Number 11.
Communication from the mayor regarding the reappointment of Brendan Downey to the Historical Commission for a three-year term to expire on March 25th, 2025, and the appointments of Adrian Gilbert, Stephanie Aferekia, and Kathleen Newton to the Historical Commission for three-year terms respectively from the date of council confirmation.
Counsel Dumis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, refer to personnel.
Motion made and seconded to refer to Personnel Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, is referred to Personnel, 10-0. Agenda Item Number 12.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Kathy Fadul to the Council on Aging for a four-year term to expire on May 2nd, 2026. She will be replacing Jean McGeeow, who recently resigned, and the appointment of Judith Benedetto to the Council on Aging for a four-year term to expire on May 5th, 2025, and she will be replacing Council President Michael Osing, whose term has expired.
Counsel Dumis.
I'm a little hesitant about this one, but we're referred to the Personnel Committee. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to refer to Personnel. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, are those in favor? Opposed, is referred to Personnel, 10-0. Agenda Item 13.
Petition for Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England, to install a new joint-owned pole on Bolton Street, beginning at a point approximately 15 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Bolton and State Streets to install a new guy wire from pole 18 to pole 1884. This is to relieve stress on pole 18 from cables going down State Street.
Counselor Landers.
The president will want to relieve that stress. Mr. President, refer this to Public Service Committee and set the date for a public hearing.
Motion's been made and seconded to refer to public service and will set a public hearing for September 12th. Motion made and seconded to send to public service and set a public hearing for September 12th. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 10-0, to send to public service and set a public hearing for September 12th. Item 13, 14.
Petition for Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England, to install a new joint-owned pole on Broad Street, beginning at a point 240 feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Broad and West Main Streets.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Service Committee and set the date for a public hearing.
Motion made and seconded to refer to public service and set a public hearing for September 12th. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is approved to go to public service and have a public hearing on September 12th. Agenda Item 15.
Petition for Massachusetts Electric in Verizon, New England, to install a new joint-owned pole on Simarano Drive, beginning at a point approximately 450 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Simarano Drive and Cedar Hill Street for new overhead equipment.
Counsel Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Service Committee and also set a date for a public hearing.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Public Services Committee and will set a public hearing for September 12th as well. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is referred to public service with a public hearing on September 12th. Agenda Item 16.
Application for renewal of a junk dealer's second-hand deal license of Best Buy Stores LP 8, number 820, at 769 Donald Lynch Boulevard.
Counsel Landers.
Mr. President, please refer to Public Service Committee.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Public Services Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, is approved to go to public service, 10-0. Agenda Item 17.
Communication from a resident regarding opposition to the proposed revised special permit from WP Marlboro, 339 Boston Post Road East. Order number 20-22-107995.
Counsel Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the communication.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the communication is filed, 10-0. Agenda Item 18.
Communication from Central Mass Mosquito Control Project regarding personnel will be in the community responding to residents' concerns about mosquitoes in various states in August, 2022.
Counsel Oram.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am sure our city clerk has this already on the website, and they do come into Marlboro on Wednesdays, so the 24th and the 31st are planned, and they're by appointment. So, people just need to call Central Mass Mosquito to request appointments at this time. Thank you.
And you want to?
Accept and place on file. I always forget that.
Thank you, Counsel Oram. Motion's been made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the communication is filed, 10-0. Agenda Item 19.